Something really quick before we go online. I don't know what the police detention service contract is.
It's the people that... The prisoners will... All the time that they're there.
Okay, as opposed to like...
They fingerprint, they, um... Again, they feed... They bring them in, they release them, all... They're completely in charge of them while they're there.
Oh, I didn't even know that existed. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, um, Don, if we can get ready to go? All right, there we go. So, we'll call the March 15th meeting of the Lincoln Park Mayor and City Council to session, or to order, however. If everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, which would be immediately followed by the invocation by Reverend Crystal Shipling of Blessed Hope Church. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, there you go.
Let us pray. We want to remember two families this evening. One is the family of Ricky Moore, who has been associated and supportive of our police department for over 40 years in a wide variety of roles, helping roles. And then Fire Chief Martin's mother-in-law passed away last Friday, and so we wanted to remember them too. Let's pray. Lord, we ask that you be with those in this meeting tonight, that you give them wisdom, clarity, good judgment, that you give them compassion, and a way to move the city forward, to keep moving forward. We thank you for them. We ask that you bless them and their families, those they're in contact with, so that nothing hinders them from this job that they've been elected to. We pray for the family of Ricky Moore, who has done so many different things to help this city move forward and to specifically help the police department. What a beacon he is for us other citizens to step in and fill in as our abilities give us a way to be supportive of this city. And then we also pray for Chief Martin's family, whose mother-in-law passed away. We just ask that both families get comfort, that you give them people around them who will lift them up and hold them and to be strong for them in this time of their need. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Reverend, thank you for taking time to be with us, be with us tonight. In between time, again, Chief Martin's mother-in-law is Mary Lehman, L-E-H-M-A-N, and she is at Martinson's Funeral Home in West End, Trenton. And visitation will be there from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday, which will be March 18th. If I could have a roll call, please.
That's a person's greeting.
President.
Dupre.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Ross.
Mayor.
Celso. Mr. Celso, you're muted.
All right, here.
Tobin.
Here.
And Mayor.
All right, and then, again, that is very sad notice on Mrs. Lehman passing on Friday, I guess totally unexpected. So, our thoughts and prayers go to his family. And made mention of Ricky Moore, who had came home on hospice and to be with his family. And he was surrounded by friends and several members of the police department and even managed a last visit over to the police department last week. So, he will be missed. This past Saturday, no, or Sunday, we're at the Blessed and Natural for a grand opening. This was at 1168 Fort Street. And it is "Made with Love for You." And it had many different types of soaps, shampoo, conditioners, all made there. And it was a very nice opening, so we wish her the best of luck. We had a little bit of a, I guess, a dry run, so to speak, for the chocolate walk, where she opened just for everyone that was there for the chocolate walk. And it ended up being a very, very nice time. So, on this past Saturday, we were also over celebrating a birthday party, the 100th birthday. And presented the proclamation at that time, but I had not had it done to be able to read for everyone to enjoy, so I will do that now. Whereas Clara Elizabeth Gerald was born on March 7, 1921, and is celebrating her 100th birthday. Whereas with great pride that the city of Lincoln Park extends recognition to Clara on this extremely special occasion and milestone in her life. And whereas during her long and productive lifetime, Clara graduated from Lincoln Park High School in 1939. She was blessed with two children and retired from Scotts Paper Company after 20 years of service. And whereas Clara has enjoyed ceramics, crocheting, making leaded glass, sewing, and traveling, therefore be it resolved that I, Thomas E. Carnes, along with the city council and all the citizens of Lincoln Park, do hereby join together in extending our warmest wishes to Clara Elizabeth Gerald for a very happy and joyous 100th birthday. And so she had many visitors that day. There is also a drive-by by the police department. And a former officer, Deputy Chief Levis, who sometimes volunteers for Meals on Wheels or as a fill-in, found out that her favorite meal was lasagna, so he had her, his wife, made a plate of lasagna for him. So, that was a very nice, very nice ceremony for her. And then next I have an appointment of Linda Romero, 1370 Electric, to the Housing Commission to fill the unexpired term of Ronded Milton, term to expired 12/31/21. So, we have that as a Mayoral appointment. And the next item that we have is... Don, if you could focus in on that patch that is above my name. He's gonna get it. A decent... Ah, there it is. "The Lincoln Park Police Department is raising money and awareness for autism during the month of April to coincide with National Autism Awareness Month. A limited edition police patch is available for only $10 while supply lasts. The custom-designed patches will help increase autism awareness throughout our community, and all proceeds will go to the Mixter Institute for Transition." And you can get that at the police station lobby. And the Mixter Institute for Transition is the old Mixter School, for those of you on electric. And what they do there is when the young men and women who are in the high school program, reach the age of 18 or after their 12th year there, they then spend from 18 to 26, where they learn to do some manufacturing of some wooden products, and they do gardening there, and they operate a resale shop. Or at least they do when we don't have the COVID restrictions. So, sop in and get a patch. Once again, they are the reasonable price of just $10. Now, we have this... We've been battling COVID now for a year, to where, I mean, everything stopped pretty much on March 13th. And we now have the vaccine available in three different ways. And we are sort of at the mercy of the county of when we have availability of getting the vaccine for our residents. And they have a heck of a job just trying to divide it up between everybody and to make it available. But when it does come, we don't have a large amount of time or a window to prepare for it. This Friday afternoon, I think about 3 o'clock, we were advised that we were going to have 1,100 vaccines at the Wayne County Community College on North Line. And so the process has started again. And we do have... We'll be taking calls for appointments, I think, tomorrow. And we've been calling back from the numbers that is on the email that I'm going to give you very, very shortly here for that. We need to get all the appointments and everything finalized so that we can send our list over to Wayne County for the Thursday appointments. It's going to be from 9:00 till 3:00 on Thursday. And in order to make an appointment, we have three different phone lines set up. These phones are the same as they were for our last drive. If you have them listed and you weren't able to get through, they're for last names A to H. Please call 313-827-6061. That's 827-6061. I through P, please call... And all of these are 313 numbers, so it's 827-6068. That's I through P, 827-6068. Q through Z, please call 827-4475. So, Q through 3, 827-4475. Probably might be the easiest for those that you have email capabilities. You can send a request for an appointment in at the email, and it's COVID, C-O-V-I-D, vaccine, V-A-C-C-I-N-E. So, one word, covidvaccine@citylp.com. And we'll have this on our Facebook page right now. I looked at our website earlier. It was not there. It will be up there in the morning. I anticipate that we'll have enough for the people that... It's going to be for, of course, 65 and over. And then it's for over 50 with secondary conditions. And so, if you desire...
If I am scheduled for my second shot already, do I have to call and confirm that?
No.
Okay, thank you much.
No, if you've already received your first shot at Wayne County Community College, you were given a little card that has a return date on it, and it'll have the information. You'll just have to go on that date, and they'll take care of you. Because when I went through it, it was a pretty good process, that. And I have another information. And this passed on from Councilwoman Ross, that on March 20th, St. Michael's Church, and 20th is Saturday, along with CHAS clinic and nurse volunteers from Henry Ford Hospital will be holding a COVID vaccination clinic from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There are a few appointments still available for LP residents 50 and over with certain existing medical conditions. If interested, please call... And then it's Belda Garza and another 313 number. It's 721-2154. That's 721-2154. I don't know, Don, if you could put this at the bottom of the... These numbers at the bottom of the screen, sort of late asking for that. But we'll get it. It'll be on... We've got it on the website, and see if we run it on the government channel, so for those of you that don't have that access. Now, most of... Some of you have seen on the news with the COVID relief bill, the stimulus package that the president signed into law. And we were pleased to see that from that bill, we're due to receive some $20 million towards infrastructure. Now, we don't know exactly what the stipulations for how these monies can be spent, and we'll be taking a strong look at that. But that will definitely help towards the issues that we have with our water system and with our roads. It's a shame that, you know, all this had to come down for us to get the money in this way. But we're thankful that they thought of us during this time because we definitely could use it. We'll have more on that when that comes. And I have just one more thing. The most recent newsletter that Jeff Day of the Historical Museum, the curator of the museum, has put out has important dates. And I'll just do the first paragraph of this. And it says, "On a partly cloudy day in March 1921," it was the 11th, in fact, "in just one week after the inauguration of the country's 29th president, Warren G. Harding, the residents of E. Course Township made their way to the polls. Some walked, some took horse and buggy, and some drove Model Ts. They're voting on whether or not to approve the incorporation of a new village to be named Lincoln Park from a section of E. Course Township. As we know, the vote was successful by a margin of 1,561 to 1,077. Soon after the March 11 vote, another election was held to create the Charter Commission, tasking creating the village's new charter and presenting it to the state of Michigan." And this is the process that began towards the creation of Lincoln Park as a village, and then later on, of course, as a city. So, we'll now move into the consent agenda. Resolving, resolved that the following items listed on the consent agenda be approved as presented the mayor and city council. One approved minutes, Reverend meeting held March 1, 2021. Two approved minutes, public hearing held March 1, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. Already closed session slash collective bargaining. Three approved minutes, study session held March 8, 2021 at 6:30 p.m. Already joint meeting of boards and commissions. Four, set study session, proposed fiscal year 2021-22 budget. Five, set public hearing, proposed fiscal year 2021-22 budget.
Don't move.
Do we have a discussion? Court call the roll.
That's a person's greeting. Higgins.
Yes.
Dupre.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
You're muted again, Mr. Celso.
All right, yes.
Tobin.
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes.
Yes. Again, next, or the first action item that we have has a cover letter from John Kazoo, our deputy... No, I'm not a deputy, our DPS director. "On background, on behalf of the city, Hennessy Engineers will be applying to the WIFS Low Interest Loan. As a part of this loan, a project plan must be developed and submitted to the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle, to be considered. The plan will include the following: City Lincoln Park, Emmens and Lincoln Pump Station improvements, including electrical controls, HVAC pump replacement, and pump station addition for the control center; complete care and place pipelining. Those sewers to be addressed would be those that have been investigated through the Saw Grant Program, cleaning and televising of the sanitary sewers in 2019; concrete improvements to the cell phone walls in the retention basin; sodium hychloric metering pump replacement; cleaning and televising, smoke testing, and floor monitoring of sewer districts listed as critical. Part of the requirements is develop a plan similar to the SRF, which is sewer rehabilitation programs from 2016 and 2019, which includes a public meeting to review the plan. Hennessy is suggesting holding the meeting on May 10, 2021." So, the resolution, be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby authorize Hennessy Engineers Incorporated to proceed with the design services and project plan for the 2021 Water Infrastructure Financing Section Low Interest Loan Program for a not-to-exceed total of $60,500 from account number 592-527-821000. Be it further resolved, the mayor and council authorize required special meeting to discuss this plan to be scheduled for Monday, May 10, 2021."
Don't move. The court.
Court call the roll.
That's a person's greeting. Yes. Tobin.
Yes.
Dupre.
Yes.
Higgins.
Ross.
Celso.
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes.
Yes. Next item has a cover letter from Doreen Christian, Director of Community Planning and Development, Parks and Recreation. "In background, a public hearing was held on Tuesday, February 16, 2021, to hear requests on the 47th CDBG budget and receive public comment. Since we received our grant amount, it is necessary to adopt the budget so the annual action plan can be submitted to HUD. Normally, that would be submitted by May 1. However, once the draft is complete, it must be posted for a period of comment for 30 days. If you'd like changes to the proposed budget, it can be done on the floor." So, the resolution is, resolve that the following proposed budget is hereby adopted for the 47th program year of the Community Development Block Grant Program beginning July 1, 2021. Administration and planning, $157,504. Community services, a crime awareness program, $10,000. First step domestic violence, $10,000. The guidance center, $5,000. The senior alliance, $3,201. Infrastructure projects, commercial building and rental rehab, $20,000. Residential rehab is zero and has notice next to it, plus projected rehab revolving fund income of $60,000. And you have streets and utilities, $585,887. And in other, code enforcement, PD, $12,000, for a total of $803,592.
Don't move. The court.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yes, go ahead.
The commercial building, the rental rehab, that is for the downtown area?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? And court call the roll, then?
That's a person's greeting.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Celso.
Yes.
Tobin.
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes.
Yes. And special thanks to, well, Doreen for putting this together, and the Community Improvement Commission for their citizens' input on this. So, next we have another cover letter from Doreen Christian. And that is, "Resolution obtained the approval of mayor council for the participation of one business in the CDBG CARES Act Small Business Grant Program." Okay, I think we can just... And then, "Resolved that the following business be approved for participation in the CDBG CARES Act Small Business Grant Program. Funds to come from CARES Act 2019 program year of the CDBG budget account 249-001-976001. And it's the Park Restaurant Incorporated, 1681 Fort Street, $15,000. Be it further resolved that Doreen P. Christian, Director of Community Planning and Development, is hereby authorized and directed to process the application."
Don't move. The court.
Court call the roll.
That's a person's greeting.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Dupre.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Celso.
Yes.
Tobin.
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes.
Yes. Next item has a cover letter from Chief Ray Waters of the Police Department. And it is, the Lincoln Park Police Department had put out a bid for a police detention contract. Police Department has received three bids. First, G4S, then second, Prudential Security, and the third, Liberty Security. The Police Department is requesting mayor and council reward Prudential Security Police Detention Contract, provided several references that highly recommended their work. And in why, the previous police detention contract is expired. Allied Universal, our current company, provided us with a 30-day notice to cancel their service, and their service will end on March 18, 2021. So, this is a fairly quick turnaround. Let me get to the resolution. "Be it resolved that Prudential Security be awarded the bid for police detention services for the Lincoln Park Police Department as they are the lowest and best qualified bidder that meets all the police department specifications. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city court be authorized to execute the contract documents. Funds for these services to come from the police department's detention officers account 101-305-776."
Don't move. The court.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Um, we got no numbers on the... How we decided to go about the... Why is that?
Well, there's an appendix that was with it that had the breakdown. Was that part of the package?
I didn't get that.
Okay, and then I'll do... You have three different appendix, say, for this. The first one listed would be Prudential, then the G4S, and then Liberty. One is supervisor's wages, Prudential, 16. G4S, 23. Liberty, 12, 25. Supervisor's bill rate, Prudential was 23, 20. G4S was 33, 73, and then Liberty was 17, 89. Supervisor OT holiday, time and a half, 34, 8 for Prudential, 47 for G4S, 26, 83 for Liberty. Officer wage, $15 for Prudential, 19 for G4, $12 for Liberty. Officer bill rate, 21, 75 for Prudential, 28, 97 for G4S, and 17, 89 for Liberty. Have some other things. Chief Waters, you're on the call?
Yes, sir.
Could you lay in a little more detail what made... What made... Was it Prudential?
So, we talked to all three of the companies. Liberty, if you look at the numbers, is the lowest bid. But actually, they came through and did a walk through the building and understood more of what the duties were going to be. They realized that they could not do the job for the original bid that they put out. But they advised us, as I said, basically, for that much and for that amount of money... But they advised us, they said, basically, for that much, for that amount of money, people could go to McDonald's and work and certainly not have to do the duties our detention officers do. So they came back with a second bid, which would put them more in line with where Prudential would be. But, you know, after speaking with our finance director and our city manager, a second bid doesn't really, isn't fair to the other bidders who put in their first and original bid at the time of bed opening. So we went with Prudential. They're a very good company, and they would be the second lowest, or that would be really the lowest bid at that point.
You're the chair, your honor.
Just Councilman Higgins, are you set with that?
Yeah. I think I'm a professional.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Because even I didn't realize that detention services were outsourced. Could the chief please just explain briefly some of the services that we're getting out of detention services? And then explain why this Prudential contract is $45,000, wouldn't cost us $45,000 more? And then also, if he would, if he would tell us how long this contract is for.
Sure. So when our officers come in with an arrest, what they do is a brief summary of the arrestee's information. That sheet gets transferred over to the detention officer along with the detainee. Detention then takes the arrest, takes their picture, their fingerprints, takes their property from them, sends their prints out to the state and to the fed, where the prisoner has been placed in a cell, an appropriate cell. They are then monitored their whole time that they're there. They try to get bond for them, or arrange bond for them, if that's a possibility. If the prisoner is on some type of medication, and they have a prescription bottle that clearly indicates the direction that they administer medication for them. They feed them, dinner, lunch, breakfast. They also, day shift is a little bit more to it because they, court is involved, so they will be trans, rocking over to the court with booking, or I'm sorry, arrest information so that the court can start a file, so that they can video rain the subject. The detention officer will be part of the arraignment, where they can get basic information on bond, and if, so that they will know if it's a personal bond, cash bond, if the person is bonding out, when they contact other agencies as far as if they're wanted for the warrants, they collect bond, people come in. So it's a, you know, pretty entailed duty that they do for us. The contract would be a two-year contract with an option to, a full head for a third year.
Hey, could you ask, yeah, if you wouldn't mind explaining why this is going to be $45,000 more a year?
Sure. So if you look at what we're paying right now for Allied, their contract, they hadn't had a raise since 2012. So if you consider that if they would have been getting minor adjustments since 2012, and we're to end today, then the jump from a company like, from Allied to Prudential, the jump would not be nearly as big of a leap. But one of the big problems that Allied has had with us is that for the money they are paying their employees, they can't, they can't, you know, fill those spots with good employees. The last four employees that they've sent over to us, we've been, as a matter of fact, we've been shorthanded with them for about two and a half years, where we've operated only three girls working our detention. Every time they try to send us somebody, they're not qualified, which means they don't, they're, they have some type of criminal history. One of them would actually be in our detention facility on the opposite side. So, and, you know, I understand, sometimes you get what you pay for, and because they pay such a low salary, that's what we are getting from them.
Thank you, chief.
So the $45,000 extra is bringing them back up to more competitive way?
No, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Anything further? Then court call the roll. Thank you, chief.
That's the person's reading.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Duprey.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Helsido.
Yes.
Hoben.
Yes.
And Mayor Cox.
Yes. All right. Next item has a cover letter from our city manager, Mr. Cruzan. "Over the past 20 years or so, the City Laken Park Department of Public Services has undergone significant changes. The staffing level of the department has decreased significantly during this time, as well as the way in which services are provided. During this time, it's more common for contractors to provide various services. For example, DPS no longer mows grass at parks and writes away, and instead utilizes a contract to provide these services. This also does not take into account the proliferation of technology and the public works processes. As the city continues to move forward, it's important to take a look at our DPS staffing levels and operations. This will allow us to be certain that we have proper staffing levels to provide services that our residents require, and that they are performed as efficiently as possible. It is important for this project to be completed by an objective third party for the study to be truly credible. To complete this project, I reached out to GovHRUSA, as their consultant firm with very expertise. They have provided a proposal to perform this work. So whereas the City Laken Park desires to ensure that the Department of Public Service is adequately staffed and using the most efficient and effective service models, and whereas the city has received a proposal from GovHRUSA to study to evaluate the current staffing levels and practices and make recommendations of a cost of $7,750. Be it resolved, the City Laken Park accepts the proposal from GovHRUSA and authorizes the mayor and city court to sign an agreement for these services."
No more for discussion. Go ahead.
Okay.
Your honor, my, my first question would be, is this $7,750, should that be reading not to exceed? $7,750?
James, here on the, on the call.
So it's not so much a not to exceed, that is, because there may be other, there may be other things that come up during the study that we want looked into more, but their initial proposal is that 7, 750. There'd also be potentially though, during this time of COVID, things that probably happen more than virtually than onsite, there may be some travel reimbursement, similar to any other consultant.
Are these consultants local?
Um, they are mostly based in the Midwest here. They have a number of different professionals in Michigan, Michigan, Illinois, Wisconsin are their three major. The consultant that they have identified, she is in, I believe, Wisconsin right now.
The chair? I, I'm just wondering why, um, there's a need to bring in an outside consultant when the DPS under John Gazoo has been running as efficiently as it possibly can, and he's been doing a good job at it, but he is understaffed. I mean, I don't think we need a consultant to tell us that he is understaffed. I have been lost to why we are budgeted for so many DPS employees, and he's not getting them. I just don't think that this is a good idea to bring in somebody at a cost like that, when if you look at that cost that we're going to put out of this, which is something I think that the city itself can decide upon, you can't really analyze, and those, that money could go towards wages. I, I just don't, I don't agree with this. If you can explain it to me, and a reason why this is something that we can't do in-house between the city manager and DPS and human resources. You know, I'm willing to listen, but I, I just don't see the point of doing this. We, we have what we have right now, we have what we have budgeted for, we're not meeting our budget, what's budgeted for, for this department, and it just goes like as far as even the mechanic that we've been trying to get for how many years now? You know, we know these things. Why spend the money for the things that we already know? Why not increase the labor wage levels for the licensing for what we need and hire these people?
If I may, mayor?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So the wage levels are currently set by collective bargaining. There's very little, little window room that we have on an individual basis. And also, we have been staffed to the budgeted level, maybe not in the mechanic, but in most of the others, and we want to make sure that we are budgeting for the right amount of people, and if not, where, how many more do we need, and where do we need them? The point of this is to bring in somebody who has extensive experience from multiple communities. John brings his experience from, from here, from Alhambard. I bring my experience from here, from Will Oak, from a small rural community, but we only have the same experience that we have, if that makes sense. Bringing somebody else in with varied experiences that is able to actually benchmark, these are the amount of people that, for the amount of work that we're doing, this is the amount of people you should have. This isn't, we're not looking at, do they have too many people? We're looking at, are do they have the right amount of people? If that makes any sense. We're just trying to make sure, and really, at this price, the cost is, is a fair price. I've looked at doing these types of studies on a much larger scale, and this is percentage wise at a ratio base, that this is where I expected it to be.
I have a, I have a question, and when she's finished, I'm sorry to touch you off.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I'm just curious, since they went out for proposals, did they suggest proposals from any other company, or did they receive proposals from any other company? Or is this the only company they?
I had tried to talk with a couple other firms, that were just not able to provide any proposals. There are very few, honestly, there are very few companies out there that do this kind of work, specifically in public services.
Isn't GovH?
Do this type of work for private companies, but not very many that do it for public services.
Is the chair?
GovHR, isn't that the one that did the, the search?
City manager?
Yeah, for the city manager. And this is, also, this isn't just one department that we're talking about, it is, is now. Five, six years ago, the, the police department underwent a, something similar, was brought in by the, the emergency manager, as a process of, of looking at our overall operations, and in the future, it's going to be all departments. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes.
I, the only problem that I have with it, James, is I don't want it to delay us still looking for people to fill those open spots in DPS.
Hey, no, that, that isn't the intention. Not, not at all. We are still recruiting, absolutely.
Okay. But then, I think that's important. From what I read, the report won't be ready for, you know, 60 days. That's going to throw us into, into spring, you know, into getting, getting prepared for summer, and we, we need to be staffed.
No, I totally agree. That's not the intention of this at all. This is looking more at a long-term planning, benchmarking kind of standpoint, not, not immediate staffing needs, but not just what we have now, but what we're going to need as we move forward.
It could very well mean that we need to have more as opposed to less. I mean, this, this isn't, we're not looking, I don't think to, to lessen the, the work staff. There's plenty of work to go around.
Is the chair around?
I heard council president first. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Just, you know, I think I share similar sentiments of my colleagues. I mean, this organization, government, they're going to check staffing levels of our surrounding communities. I can make six phone calls and give you the staffing levels of the DPS down river. Has there been an internal review, perhaps by city leadership, here on some of the sources that we're providing that maybe not the power that maybe we need to know about? In the last two years, as a liaison to the DPS, I've discovered that they were understaffed and under budgeted, just like Maureen said. So to spend 7,500-plus travel and accommodations, I don't know, was there more thought put into this? And I'm not going to say if I agree or not, but I'm just, it's kind of struck my, myself last three days, so that's all I have at this time.
And yes, I've been speaking with various communities in southeast Michigan about staffing levels and workloads and various services provided.
Can I, can I ask how, how are we stand now according to what we, we budgeted? Because I, I understand we're understaffed to where, did we ever get any part-time staffers in?
Um, we have, we have hired some part-timers. Unfortunately, we've also had some full-timers move on, but we've been lucky enough to keep some of those part-timers and move them to the full-time positions. I do believe we have a few full-time positions still shaking out. We had a few guys move on, and so after the shuffle around from the various divisions, I think we should still have some, a position posted. John would know better at the exact moment, but we are, we haven't been able to bring some guys in, we need to bring in more.
And what about the secretarial position over there? Has that ever been done?
Um, unfortunately, it has not. We've had a few interviews, that the interview has moved on, and then maybe we had issues with the background. Hiring, hiring in general is not easy right now, but you've got to remember, this is not going to look at the people in place at the second, it's looking at how many people are doing how many different things, right?
Excuse me, to the chair, please?
Hold on, hold on one second. Mike, great.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, being that we are so understaffed, I don't know, I guess it's hard for me to, to say that we can be reviewed at this point. We don't have processes for some things because we don't have people to do them. Is this more just to evaluate workload and determine if even we have enough people, or how deep is this going to be? I guess, because for $7,000, I think we should, um...
Postpone this matter.
Yeah.
Resolve, resolve that, that we should be.
Yes, particularly, yes, I agree, because, and we don't even know what they need, and who can be worked if we don't have them hired yet. And that's a concern. Yes, thank you.
Okay. James, did you respond to that?
I think we're, we're focusing on the wrong things here. Yeah, we're a couple, a couple people short at the moment, but this would take into account that. It would indicate that, yes, you need to get caught up, and you either need more people, or you should be okay once you hit, hit that number. This would be pretty deep into the processes we use. Are there better ways to do things? Is there more efficient technology out there to help organize workload? Is, are there other things we're not, are there things we're doing that we don't need to be doing anymore, are there things we're not doing that we should be doing? That's the type of analysis this is going to be. It's not, it's not just about, are we under or overstaffed?
And to be fair then, if we're losing people too, we're not going to be able to hire them in the next week of the wages of these jobs. People aren't, we're not going to be able to fill positions. So again, that's something to look at. This might stink it.
Is there, is there anything further? Councilwoman Breeding, you were speaking before, did you say a piece, or is it?
Well, I just, I just believe that we should have a motion to postpone it for, until we get all, everyone's questions answered, whether it be at the next council meeting or at the second one in the month of April.
Are you breaking the motion or are you just suggesting that we should be making a motion?
I'm making a motion if anyone would like to support it.
I will support that.
Okay, is there, and the motion is to, Carrie, do you have, do you have the motion?
Do you want to make a motion to table this?
No, I'd rather postpone it.
Well, there should be a date certain if you postpone against.
Whatever the second meeting in April is. Over the 19th. Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I think it's possible that we maybe a study session for this, that sits down in a room and talk about the DPS, and we'll fill out over there.
Well, I don't know that it's a study session, but the whole purpose of what we would have is to take a look at what the operations are and then have all of that information presented. And then you would go with a study session, in my opinion, but- All right, further discussion on the motion to postpone? All right, Carrie, read the motion as it, as it is.
So this will be by councilwoman Breeding, supported by councilman Higgins. Resolve that the above resolution be postponed until April 19, 2021.
Your honor, may I suggest the place for consideration on the April 19, 2021 council agenda? And no action within, indicating today that you just move to place it on that agenda?
Okay, so let me have that one more time, city attorney. Hold on.
You want to repeat that?
Yes, he just said that. Go ahead, go ahead.
Be placed on the agenda of the April 19, 2021 meeting. And that would be the mover and supporter, so then we just pull off today's agenda and be placed as a new agenda item, so we're officially placing it as an agenda item on that meeting by council action tonight.
Okay.
Or you could say it's being referred to that meeting, whatever relax, like, I just prefer to have it placed on the agenda. It seems simple enough to me.
Correct.
All right, that's good with the mover and supporter?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay. Is there further discussion on that? All right, court call the roll.
Councilperson's Breeding?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Dupre? Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mayor Carr.
No. Okay, the next item that we have is resolved that in ordinance to amend Part 6 of the codified ordinances of the city of Lincoln Park by adding a new section, point 07, to chapter 666 entitled "Aggressive Begging and Soliciting", be given its first and second reading. The city of Lincoln Park ordains that Part 6 of the codified ordinances for the city of Lincoln Park, chapter 666, be amended by adding a new section, point 07, entitled "Aggressive Begging and Soliciting" as follows. 666.07 "Aggressive Begging and Soliciting." A, the following words, terms, and phrases, when used in this section, shall have the meaning provided below, except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. Accosting means approaching or speaking to a person in such a manner that would cause a reasonable person to fear imminent body, bodily harm, or the commission of a criminal act upon his person or upon property in his immediate procession. Ask, beg, or solicit means and includes, without limitation, the spoken, written, or printed word or such acts as are conducted in furtherance of the purpose of obtaining donations. Forcing oneself upon the company of another means continuing to ask, beg, or solicit from a person after that person has made a negative response, blocking the passes of the individual addressed or otherwise engaging in conduct which could reasonably be constructed as intended to compel or force a person to accede to demands. B, it shall be unlawful for any person to solicit money or other things of value. One, on private property, if the owner, tenant, or lawful occupant has asked the person not to solicit on the property or has posted a sign clearly indicating that, solicitations are not welcome on the property. Two, within 15 feet of the entrance, two or exit from any public toilet facility. Three, within 15 feet of an automated teller machine, provided that when an automated teller machine is located within an automated teller machine facility, such distance shall be measured from the entrance or exit of the automated teller machine facility. Four, within 15 feet of any payphone, provided that when a payphone is located within a telephone booth or other facility, such distance shall be measured from the public entrance or exit of the telephone booth facility. Five, within any public transportation vehicle or within 15 feet of any bus stop, taxi stand, or rapid transit stop. Continuing. Six, shall not enter the roadway from any operator of a motor vehicle that is being operated on a public street, provided, however, that this subsection shall not apply to services rendered in connection with emergency repairs requested by the owner or passenger of such vehicle. Seven, from any person who is waiting in line for entry to any public or any building, public or private, including but not limited to any residence, business, or athletic facility. Or eight, within 15 feet of the entrance or exit from a building, public or private, including but not limited to any residence, business, or athletic facility, without the knowledge and consent of or invitation of the owner or party in control of that building. C, it shall be unlawful for any person to solicit money or other things of value by one, accosting another, or two, forcing oneself upon the company of another.
I'm bored.
Okay, discussion?
Is the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
We've had this issue for some time, and it's nice to see that you're understanding that it's, a lot of the property is under town and cannot enforce a very many things. Do you think we're going to be able to enforce it?
Yes, and what is, what is specified, yes, it will be able to be enforced. Somebody just standing there with a sign is not, unfortunately, that's been limited, to my understanding, because city attorney, you can jump in if I'm wrong. It's been protected or deemed protected by, as a First Amendment, so-
That's correct, your honor. Irrespective of private, public, county, or state, or city property, if they violate the conditions of the ordinance, we have concurrent jurisdiction over those properties. You can give a citation for that. If they're on the freeway, the city certainly can give, they take it. If they're on an approach, on an eastbound, on a rightway, if they step into the roadway, there are plenty of things the city can do in front of county property, it's the same. Understand that the balancing test is with whether it is protected speech or with a lawful call in court of appeals, protective begging. It's the aggressive begging that defines the difference that allows the issue of citations.
And there is, no penalty is listed or no, that you'd be guilty of a misdemeanor or such. So it would fall back on, it'd be a misdemeanor?
Yes, your honor, 90 days and $500 fine and award.
Okay. Is there further discussion on this? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Higgins?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
Breeding?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Carr.
Yes. Next item has been moved by councilwoman Tobin and supported by councilman Higgins. Whereas a position of event coordinator is currently vacant, and whereas it's important in event coordinator, we're in the policies and procedures for the operation of events. And where it is important to keep a good working relationship with participants and vendors to continually bring quality events to our residents, and therefore be resolved that the city managers will fill the position of event coordinator immediately to prevent disruption or delay in the events that our residents enjoy. So we'll go to, to a discussion that immediately is not, in the next couple minutes, right? Okay, so, councilwoman, you want to, you want to lead off discussion?
I've been working on the events since, before I was elected, trying to put them together for the next coming year. I know what a challenge it can be, and I know that James has got people working on it. I just don't see it moving ahead as it should. I see a lot of problems that are going to arise and are currently arise as now that we've released the cruise information and we've released the Art in the Park applications. We've received one application as of Friday, whereas before we would be almost close to being filled. Everything goes to a general email. I think the best position for this, for, would be to hire someone in this position. I said since before I was elected that I would be happy to mentor this person, introduce this person, help them along, so events stay at the level that they have been. The crafters, the vendors, the food sellers, they're a very tight organization, and you want to be able to work well with them. And I am a little concerned that we have not moved forward with these things being, being, the applications coming in and things being set up. There's a lot that goes to the job besides just getting, you know, the vendors in place and figure out where you're going to put them and that. There's licensing, there's all kinds of things. I do not want to see the city lose any of the events. I know that it's kind of split out now among some people in the city, but they already have their jobs. Let's put more on them. And I think that it's really important that we find one person to be ahead of us that can be introduced to carry out all the things that involve. It's just a lot, and I, I'm afraid that we are going to lose a lot if we do not find one person to do this.
Has this position been eliminated, James?
It has not been eliminated. We've just been pulling off, kind of trying to do everything we can to keep things going. But understanding with COVID restrictions, there's still a chance a lot of events might not happen. We are hoping, moving forward here as people are getting vaccinated, that the summer concerts in one way or shape or form will be able to get going. And hopefully by fall, most normal events will be able to take place.
Well, by fall is usually when the events, oh, excuse me, through the chair.
Yes, hold on, hold on. So is the position currently out for, to be accepting applications for it?
You know, they haven't posted right now. Doesn't mean we can't post it, but it's not currently posted. And truly, we are having a lot of difficulty filling these, the part-time positions right now.
Well, we don't know if we don't try, though, right?
Well, we've been trying to fill, I think, two or three various part-time clerical positions.
Okay. Councilwoman Tobin, by immediately, I was a little flippant earlier, but is it that, by immediately, you mean to put it out, put the application out?
To get the application out, yeah. The concert series starts on June 4th, and is completely booked through October 3rd. If we can get a person in place before the concert series start, and they can be introduced to the band, they can be shown how to learn the P A, the timetables of everything. Right after the concert series opens, we go into Downriver Cruise, which involves food trucks and vendors. So someone in that position, they can learn all the ropes and can meet the people that have been coming back for the last five years to keep a good thing going. So when they say, oh, an event in Lincoln Park, we want to come because they're a very touchy lot, and we need to have a good rapport with them. And if you're going to use four or five people for these events, there's not one good person they're going to identify with, and it could make it very hard in the future to fill up spots like Art in the Park.
Okay.
Is there any other, is the chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
As somebody who has put on events myself and who has done this type of work, I'd like, for the law of the world, it's beyond the food. People don't understand and don't know what happens. And we have made great strides in the last few years. I am a great believer in that putting on events, bringing people into our city, we show up our restaurants, we show up, you know, the good things we have in Lincoln Park, we get them to come back, who invest in Lincoln Park, and, you know, be a real community we are. It is the best PR we have. We do not want to lose those, or take a step back. And like Maureen was saying, I'm sorry, councilwoman Maureen, saying, if you give your vendors the most, the second thought of, we're not going to be professional, and we're not going to be on our spot when we do things, put them in someplace else, and we don't want to lose where we have come. Thank you.
Okay, James, it is a budgeted position, right?
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion? I'm sorry-
Is the chair, your honor?
You go ahead now.
If I could just add that, I believe the latest from the state was that 16 and older as of, what is it, the first week of April will be able to get vaccinated. So I, I think with that, and just the fact that people are ready, we're ready to get, you know, to do things, to be together, to have some fun. I think we should at least prepare and be ready.
Is that-
Is it?
Yep.
My computer's kind of, sometimes it freezes, so I have to be, I have to be certain on that.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's, it's on me. Is there further discussion? All right, then court call the roll.
Councilperson Tobin?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Breeding?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Carr.
Yes. So we'll move on to the next item, whereas, whereas the mayor and city council pursuant to section 1 of chapter 4, appointed officers of the charter of the city of Lincoln Park, appointed officers of the charter of the city of Lincoln Park, wish to appoint Edward Zelnick, city attorney for the city of Lincoln Park. And whereas pursuant to section 4 of chapter 4, appointed officers of the charter of the city of Lincoln Park, mayor and council further wish to establish compensation for these duties of city attorney. these duties of city attorney. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Park mayor and council does hereby appoint Edward Zelenek to the position of city attorney for the city of Lincoln Park for a term to begin January 1, 2021 and expire on December 31, 2022. And be it further resolved that mayor and council approve the city attorney retainer agreement for the city attorney heretofore attached as attachment A. And be it further resolved that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the city attorney retainer agreement on behalf of the city of Lincoln Park.
I'll move.
Okay, discussion?
Through the chair, your honor.
Yes, sir.
Just briefly, I don't know, maybe Gary can help me on this, but on the city attorney retainer agreement where it says now therefore it is agreed, but this is almost to the middle. Number one, it says term to expire January 1, 2022. Is that otherwise renewed? Should that be December 22nd or am I reading it wrong? Unless otherwise renewed or extended on January 1st, but on the original one it says to expire on December 31, 2020.
I think it should say renewed or extended on January 1, 2020.
So that is correct then?
2023.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, further discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Reading?
Yes.
Duprey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Celso?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mayor Cars.
Yes.
Congratulations, Ed.
The next, whereas the mayor and city council pursuant to section 218.02B of the city of Lincoln Park codified codes, wish to appoint Amy Higgins, assistant city attorney. And whereas pursuant to section 218.02E, the mayor and council further wish to establish compensation for these duties of assistant city attorney. Now therefore be it resolved that Lincoln Park mayor and council does hereby appoint Amy Higgins to the position of assistant city attorney for the city of Lincoln Park for a term to begin January 1, 2021 and expire on December 31, 2022. And be it further resolved that the mayor and council approve the professional services agreement for assistant city attorney heretofore attached as attachment A. And be it further resolved that mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the professional services agreement on behalf of the city of Lincoln Park.
I'll move. The board.
Okay, discussion on this?
Your honor?
Yes.
Just like to point out that Amy Higgins has no relation whatsoever to myself.
Okay. Any further discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Reading?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Duprey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Celso?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mayor Cars.
Yes. And then resolve that Leslie Nemeth, 1912 White, is hereby appointed to the local officers' compensation commission to fill the unexpired term of Amelia Zelenek, term to expire May 1, 2025.
So forth.
Discussion? I think, James, before we used to get a little bit of information about the candidate when it came across, just a little, like a small bio, just for the future one, that's all I have in discussion. Anyone, anything further? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Ross?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
Reading?
Yes.
Duprey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Celso?
Yes.
And Mayor Cars.
Yes. Okay, we don't have any checks for, that were released for D date, so. Resolve that the council claims payable for those items greater than $25,000 be approved as follows. DUWA, March 2021 excess flow charges and principal and interest downriver. Sewage revenue, January 2021 sewage user fees, $625,793.06. DTE, February 2021 electric, gas, street and traffic lights, $80,161.77. GFL Environmental USA, March 2021 residential curbside and recycling dumpster service for the city, $199,042.74. Great Lakes Contracting, 2020 CDBG concrete program and 2020 concrete utility repairs, Great Lakes Water Authority, January 2021 billing for water, $196,722.21. Homespun Furniture, the library flooring, $32,974.79. The Huntington National, semi-annual principal interest due, 2010 semi-annual bond change, McKenna Associates, February 2021 building services permits, $38,598.82. MRS, February 2021 defined benefit, $219,313.95. PNC Institutional, 2020, 2021 police fire pension payment, $2,841,212.4. City Riverview, January 2021 dumping service, $29,732.69. I'll move on then. Okay, discussions? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Celso?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
Reading?
Yes.
Duprey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And Mayor Cars.
Yes. We've reached the time for our city manager's report, so Mr. Cruzan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. A couple of quick notes. First, this, as we sit right now, this would likely be our last virtual meeting for the council. A bill has been introduced in the state senate to extend virtual meetings for all the way through June. That has yet to get any action, though it is likely anticipated it will go through. I'll keep everybody posted as we find out. A couple DPS notes here. The first day that compost is going to be picked up is April 5th, that's a Monday. DPS has also been awarded a tree planting grant. They were allotted 80 trees. They're going to be doing the planting. I think they still have about 40 trees left to give out, so if residents want a tree in the in the easement, get ahold of DPS. So as I mentioned, we are having a COVID vaccine clinic at Wayne County Community College on Thursday. We will have more information on the website, but I know the news here on Channel 7, I think the Free Press also ran the press release. Also on the Facebook page is the information for how to call to request an appointment. We're going to be calling everybody on the list tomorrow. We're going to try and fill up all the appointments. If we still have room, we'll continue outreach. And then also, you guys may have seen the news story today on Channel 7 that came out about the stimulus money. We are tracking what's going on with that. It is very exciting if it does indeed come to fruition that we have, that's significant in the running, coming for a construction. Also tonight, we talked about the DPS operations and staff evaluation. I know you guys still have questions on it, so if you want to shoot me an email with any kind of specific questions you have, I'm happy to either get the information or give it if I have it. And then just finally tonight, as the mayor mentioned earlier, the fire chief's mother-in-law did pass away, so he will not be here to do the department head report, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Through the chair, your honor.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
First, that's nice. First off, James, maybe you can help me on this one. The traffic light on Ferris and Southfield going eastbound, particularly the one on the right-hand side, it doesn't, it's not that bright and then with the 5 o'clock sun on it, it's kind of dim. A resident pointed out to me and I checked it out over the weekend and it does seem to appear to be dimmer, just so you know, I don't know if you can check into that. I also had a couple of residents text me, did the sirens go off on the first Saturday this month? No?
I had to double check.
I have a couple of calls on that. I didn't remember hearing it either, but just, it's something I don't hear all the time, but just two issues there and yes, I'll definitely email you some questions in regards to your proposal. I do believe your intent was good on it, just probably off-guard, so that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Anything else?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, what is?
On the website, under the boards of the commissions, the lower A's and positions still aren't updated. I was wondering if we could look into that.
We'll get it up there.
Thank you.
Anything else for the city manager from council?
Through the chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Last summer, we had a lot of problems, especially around our building. We're not looking very well. That kept up low. I don't, I would think we need to get on this as soon as possible and plan it for the spring through the summer and I'm just going to give you fair warning that we want it better taken care of this year and it's going to take care of a lot of people.
Now, I complained earlier, actually, at one point last week where I was out walking the building with John Kazoo and talking about different things we need to do and things we should be doing, so, absolutely.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. James, can we please get the building reports again monthly, those monthly, you know, the...
Yep.
Okay. And then I know that you were working on doing something different with the LP pride reports.
We'll get those too, ma'am.
Thank you. And I think we will email a while back about seeing if we could notify the American, I'm sorry, the Michigan Association of Realtors about our resale certificate requirements? Did we, is that something we can do?
I think it's possible. How far it goes?
Yeah.
We can only give so much information that, you know, has to be received well.
Right, right. But I'm just trying to find ways to close some gaps in the whole process there. And then there's a lot of talk tonight about those positions that we have open. Why, why is it that, I mean, any idea as to why we cannot, why we don't have applicants?
Well, and it's not often that we don't have applicants. Often, you know, for example, a couple of weeks ago, we had three interviews scheduled for part-time clericals and two of the people didn't even show up. They didn't call, didn't show. So it's something I'm hearing from a lot of employers as well, that they're having a lot of difficulty filling positions. And I don't know, I don't know if it's, if people are, there's a lot of things going on, right? You've got extended unemployment benefits that are helping. There's still children, children not being in normal school life, not having before-school care, after-school care. There's a lot of things going on right now that's making it difficult. We continue to try and interview, we did hire, we had a new, a new water clerk start today. I believe we have another cashier for the full-time positions that are able to fill, so that's going to help and then we can move on and put more focus on some of the part-time positions, but it's a difficult time to hire right now.
Okay. I was like, I'm hoping it's not us, like, do we need to look at us?
Right. Well, and we are doing a lot of comparison right now with other communities, looking at wages, looking at everything. And a lot of the clerical positions are actually very comparable, so that's a good thing to see.
Okay.
Okay, anything, anything further for the city manager? All right, then we'll move on. As the city manager said, the fire chief is on breakment, so we'll open up for citizen communication, so.
Go ahead if I need to.
Is there anyone wishing to address council?
Hi, Leslie Johnson. Just want to give everybody an update on farmers' markets since it's March. This year we are going to do the market weekly. As you know, last year, due to the pandemic, we were forced to only do three monthly markets because we just didn't have enough volunteers to do a weekly. A pandemic has added a lot of extra steps to farmers' markets, a lot of extra tasks. And so we can't survive as a farmers' market financially if we don't do it weekly, so we are searching for volunteers to help us, we are searching for sponsors, looking at having organizations who, you know, groups of four or five people, doesn't even have to be an official organization, it can be just, hey, you and three, four of your neighbors come down and help. If you're an organization, we'll put a canopy up for you. You can use the opportunity to promote your organization to the shoppers at the market. So if anybody's interested in any of that or is interested in being a sponsor or even a vendor, vendor applications will be going out any day now. Contact me, 313-598-3137. Farmers Market email, lpfm@inbox.com. Facebook, Lincoln Park Farmers Market, make sure it's the Michigan Lincoln Park Farmers Market. Get contacted by New Jersey, Lincoln Park, Chicago, whatever you want to do. So just wanted to let everybody know on that, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address council? All right, then hearing none, then we'll move over to all reports of mayor and council. Council President Celso. I thought he was there. Council President Celso.
You know, he has jumped off a few times today. I think he may be having some connection issues because he has jumped off in the past a few times. I keep my eyes open for him.
Well, we need jumps back while, Councilwoman, reading.
Yes, and I have to apologize. I had my phone muted. I wanted to point out to the city manager if he could, I wanted to bring it to his attention because he reported that on River Drive at River Court, the street light is out and it's been out for a couple of months and my fault for not turning it in before, but that's on River Drive at River Court. And, and other than that, I just want to give everyone a heads up. I'm going to have surgery again later part of this month and just so you'll be aware, if the surgery turns out fine, then everything is great. If not, I may have to resign from my position, so I'll just put that out there for thought anyway, so, okay, that's all that I have tonight.
Okay, well, definitely pray for the best on that.
Thank you.
Councilman Higgins?
Council president's back, I don't want to go with him. Joseph Fisher's back.
Okay, Council President Celso. Okay, Council President Salsedo, if you can unmute him. There you go.
I'm just a couple quick things, once again, condolences to the family of Ricky Moore and also Chief Martin. It's been a long night, not a brilliant, councilwoman brilliant, I wish you the best. Also, everybody have a happy and safe St. Patrick's Day, and also a happy Easter holiday weekend coming up in April. See you all April 5th. Bye-bye.
All right, thanks, sir. Councilman Higgins?
Thank you. Wishes for the, for the, good luck. And Martin, definitely. I'd like to thank the residents who came out this weekend. The Andrew R. Tiddy had a park cleanup and had Lincoln at Long Park, had a great, great show, fortunate coverage, filed it up, and I just want to thank you everybody who participated. The Andrew R. Tiddy also would like to announce that our going-out was kind of kind this year. He will be in fifth and sixth at Lincoln Park High School, and all the money, also will be loaned to the athletic department. I'd like to give a big thank you to the CPA, the officials who signed for all the work that he did, putting together the budget and the block credit, for the end of the call of duty, just thank you very much, and that's all I have for the meeting, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilwoman Tobin?
Hi, everybody. I want to say I attended the Blessed Natural grand opening on Saturday, and they are very nice people, and I bought some of the products, and they are very nice. I will definitely be going back there. The week before, we had the State Farm grand opening, and I've been in contact with Mallory there to get some better rates, so they're located on Dix, just south of, what is it, Emman, not Emman.
Lopar, I believe.
Yeah, right there. But nice people, if you're looking for insurance, please stop in, support them, always good to have new businesses come in. On March 28th, the exchange couple is, I'm sorry, instead of having our annual Easter egg hunt, we are having an Easter egg drive-through at the community, at the band shop, and it'll be people driving in, and the kids will be getting bags of candy, Easter Bunny will be there, Time Out Teddy will be there, we'll be giving our pamphlets on the prevention of child abuse to the adults, also cyber safety for kids, so if you know anybody age nine and under, please ask them to come out and get some candy. And with that said, happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody, and we'll stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Ross?
You're muted.
You need to unmute. There we go.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to start by, going through the job opportunities, the working opportunities that you'll find on the website. We have full-time firefighter, a full-time mechanic, a full-time police officer, a part-time administrative clerk, part-time animal care attendant, a part-time ice resurfacer operator, part-time laborer, part-time recreation attendant, and then, of course, the forward, the new posting of the part-time events coordinator. If you are interested in the Lincoln Park history book, there's still a few copies left, and those are $20. If you're interested in purchasing a brick paper from the museum, order forms are available by emailing lpmuseum@gmail.com, or you can email mayor or any one of us on council, we all have an email copy that we can forward as well. Remember, these are once-in-a-lifetime, centennial local papers, or the larger ones that they normally sell, and they're discounted for this year at $125. James, I want to thank you for mentioning the trees that the DPS has available for residents that can be planted on the easements. I saw that on Facebook, and I thought, well, maybe we have this on our website, but we didn't, and not everybody has Facebook, so if we could find a way just to make sure that the information is in all areas, so that the information gets to everyone, please. I think that's great news about the $20 million. Hopefully, that comes through, and we can do wonderful things with it, but just when I think back on the resolution that we passed tonight, that we're going to have that study session with Hennessy, that's $15 million worth of work right there. That $20 million will go by so fast. One more thing I forgot about the Historical Society, they are launching a new website. On March 20th, the Historical Society and the museum will have a new website, and you can find it at www.lphistorical.org. And that is all I have, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Duprey?
Yes, hello, everyone. I'm really excited right now to see a lot of interest in the community garden, and, again, on Facebook, but there's been discussion in the last, I don't know, five or six days where somebody brought up the green garden, and everybody is like, yeah, yeah, we want it, and actually people are taking action on it, and it's exciting, because I'm an avid gardener, and sometimes I don't want to be here in garden, so it's nice to go there in garden. So that's exciting. We don't have any specific details yet, she's going to meet with the people on Wednesday, and then we'll have an update. Yes, we had two ribbon cuttings since we last met, my first two, and it was so much fun to just feel the positive energy of these people opening a business, and they feel supported by the city, and they, I've heard that both businesses are growing, and know that, you know, if you have issues, please let us know, because we don't know unless people tell us, and we want to be known as the place you are, you want to be. The ball meeting, just FYI, I'm using my phone, because I don't have access to sending now anybody that's going to email me, Tracy, Renee, and Duprey at gmail.com until that gets cleared up, and I had to get agenda on my phone, so I wasn't, you know, I wasn't playing. I know it's funny when people hold their phone, but I had to read from it. Other than that, everybody have a wonderful spring holiday, and we should see you after that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Remember the, there we go, the right spot, the patches for autism that are on sale at the police department for $10. Hope everyone would have a very safe St. Patrick's Day. I'm sure not everybody is out like they, like they used to do, used to with that, and with that, I think that I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, all right.
Okay, court call the roll.
Officer person's Salsedo?
Yes.
Duprey?
Yes.
Reading?
She's muted.
She's muted.
There you go.
Yes. Councilman Higgins?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Hoben?
Yes.
And Mayor Cars.
Yes. Good night, everyone, and prayers to your honor.